Ms. Jordan?
Here.
Mr. Lamb?
Here.
Ms. Slough?
Here.
Mr. Michael?
Here.
Mr. Shaughnessy?
Here.
Ms. Shear?
Here.
And Mr. Spicer?
Here.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a moment of silence for the young man who committed suicide a couple of weeks ago. I didn't do that last time. I have a motion to adjourn to executive session for employment of particular individuals, employment history of particular individuals, corporations, and to seek legal advice. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Announced and approved.
We don't have any reservations coming out of executive session.
So we'll move to public participation. Is there anyone who would like to address the board at this time? Any member of the public to address the board? Okay, we'll move on to approval of minutes of January 8th, 2020. I have a motion.
Second.
Are there any comments or corrections? All in favor of approving the minutes of January 8th, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Announced and adopted. And now we go to superintendent's reports.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shaughnessy. First on the superintendent's report tonight, we have our principal from Miller Middle School, Mr. Andrew Sheever.
And his teammate.
Oh, and Vice Principal Tim Reed. I'm sorry, Mr. Reed. I didn't notice you without your beard so long.
Good evening, Owen. Thanks for having us here once again to give a summary report on some of the goings-ons at Miller Middle School. As usual, we try to come up with an overarching theme for the evening. So tonight's theme is glacial ablation. Why is this slightly inspired by our recent trip to Iceland? So in case you didn't know, glacial ablation is the loss of ice and snow from a glacier system. A lot of natural reasons why that would happen. We're using that as a general metaphor for melting a glacier of cold, rigid disciplinary strategies that one might use in school, and also to combat the erosive properties of disproportionate institutional inertia. So some opportunities for changing both at Miller Middle School. We've been, on our second year really now, of studying trauma and how it impacts education. Started with book study last year and working again through principal meetings with Beatrice and others, and just kind of bringing that practice to school and turnkeying that toward building. We've been focusing a big deal on culturally responsive education, more specifically proportionality of students in our advanced classes, but also in credit opportunities in the middle school and how that affects the overall graduation rate later on when they get to that school. And lastly, our ventures into restorative justice practices based on those first two things. And so we've recognized through our work that trauma is clearly a barrier to the growth of looking to happen. It's really at the core of a lot of what is ailing our kids and holding them back from their reaching of potential and our efforts to meet them at their junctures where they need to be met and create that growth. As if you don't have the knowledge of the work, a lot of that comes from an awareness of adverse childhood experiences, commonly known as ACEs, that occur throughout a child's life. That can be anything from split parents to homelessness to poverty to events that happen in a child's life that kind of mark or scar them. But we've learned that it's not enough just to identify those, you know, we need to combat that. And so something that we're doing to combat that is to help them develop what we call resi-- not we don't call it, but what's called resiliency factors. And so that comes with building relationships with these students, showing compassion even when they're lashing out and acting out some of the drama and trauma in their lives, really enhancing communication with them about their needs and their families and their needs, and how we can all kind of partner together to overcome these obstacles, provide that support. But also, as we're learning as we go through this process, the need and ability to provide self-care for ourselves as well as practitioners so that we don't fall victim to what's politically called compassionate fatigue. When we work with children with trauma, a lot of people are in trauma, it takes a toll on you as well. So all of that kind of goes to some of what we've been doing of late. And so to kind of sum it up, we realize that discipline responses have been kind of frozen, and again, to overabuse the metaphor here, administrators tend to have to be hard. But we are indeed seeing light and recognizing that kind of follow the trauma to use the child. So Tim will talk.
So I want to talk a little bit, just briefly about, I want to talk briefly about the trauma and the work that we've been doing. The other day, about a week ago, we showed the resiliency movie at Edmond Middle School for our community. Mr. Shaughnessy was there. We were having a discussion with the panel about some of the work that we've been doing to trauma. And one of the things that I brought up, and it was just a weird thing that really just came to me in that minute, I was thinking about, you know, when we first got here, when Mr. Sheever and I first started working at Miller, you know, one of the things that we kept saying to each other is, you know, almost every single day, we would be on the phone with a parent that was extremely angry, screaming and yelling and carrying on, clearly upset, clearly venting. And we commented often, I mean, I've commented personally to some of you, you know, about the amount of it. It's a weird thing. It's sort of like, you know, it's like if you've ever lived next to a train and then moved, you just don't notice that the train's not there. Something happened when we were talking on the panel that I just, I, you know, I added a comment, you know, we're not seeing as much of that this year as we have in the past with parents. And we have certain situations and certain parents that we're still working with, but we're seeing an improvement in some of the behavior in parents of a lot of the things that we're working with students in terms of building relationships and communication with students, we're doing with parents also, and we are starting to see some of that pay off. So I have, it's the kind of thing you just don't notice sometimes until you, until it's there again. But during that panel discussion, I brought that up, we were talking about that. So, you know, that's one of the real positive changes that I've seen in the community. Restorative practices, as many of you know, we've been doing some restorative training with the Defenders Association. Miller and Bailey have been collaborating. There's about 20 faculty members between both schools that have been trained as facilitators. We've started the circle process and restorative practices in both buildings. Since at Miller, since November, when we started this process, we've had 15 counseling sessions, 14 mediations, 16 restorative conferences, five restorative circles, and more on the way. In fact, the data doesn't reflect that I had two circles today. We've had some great success with the circles. When it works, it works very well. So right now, we're, you know, our facilitators are still kind of getting their feet wet, so to speak, but things are going well. These are some pictures of restorative, or these are community circles. We don't, we didn't want to take any pictures of the restorative circles because it's certainly a very private situation, but our teachers are doing community circles on a weekly basis. One of the things that we created in conjunction with Bailey, this form is the Miller form, but we collaborated with Bailey to create a restorative meeting outcome agreement. This is part of the process. This form gets completed by facilitators and participants. Circles aren't just for students, they're, we're also using them when there's a conflict between a student and a teacher.
So we are a community that's evolving. As you just heard, we're working with our faculty that are trained, we're certainly working with the children as we're dealing with some of the things that are unfolding. But what we're seeing is the children are starting to come forward now. They're coming and from grass root efforts, wanting to change their atmosphere, change the feeling of the building. So the next little slide are efforts of the students to change the overall atmosphere, get better messaging from the students to the students. So this is, I want to kind of like be a bully, not a bunny, not a bully. This is a mural that's still in progress. It speaks for itself about the image, the messages they're trying to pass on. These are two of the young ladies that are currently working on it. This is the circle of, I'm sorry, the Day of Love that we had, actually, late spring circle, late spring. It was in conjunction where throughout the building, we ran community circles in each of the classrooms. They showed a movie that was, this is a tapestry, twenty square, it's a different child created. This isn't even full tapestry, it doesn't fit on the screen. But each one is a representation of love that was reinforced both in the English classes, some writings they were doing, the art classes, each child was just asked to depict love. This is a lot of, some traditional and some not so traditional, wanted to make this image of a child being a dog, and a love in all its forms. But again, just the outgrowth of the students wanting to share their emerging understandings. And it's not just the students, the teachers as well, as I mentioned before, to avoid this compassion fatigue. They're recognizing that it's important that we help one another to do this work. And so everything from a professional development workshop that's being run by our teachers for our teachers called Thriving Not Surviving, and that's an after-school thing that's happening weekly, is they kind of look to find mindful ways to not let the work that we do get you down and to kind of recharge the soul. A separate group of teachers, our teacher, came forth and wanted to, you know, do, have an opportunity to kind of share with each other the work we're doing, and kind of praise one another. And so they started the Miller Rocks Board. This is the slip, You Rock, She Rule, and then just some images of actual slips of just people thanking one another for the work they're doing in our building, and just really building their community of self and collaborative care. So now we're going to play a game. What do all these students have in common? Remember that. What do these students have in common? Aside from the obvious, they all go to Miller School, and they're all children, and they're all creating something. They're all earning high school credit while still in Miller Middle School. So to kind of speak to that a little bit, thanks to the foresight of many people in this room, certainly including Dr. Pedelino, moving the fifth grade to the middle school has had the advantage of us allowing more seat time to be covered as middle school earlier on, which then opened the door to the possibility of high school credit for students while they're in eighth grade. Now, it's also an opportunity to address the disproportionality that we're seeing in some of those classes that were then giving us credit. So, you know, many years I spent at the high school, some of the kids that least needed a leg up on credits were entering the high school with credits, and those that needed them the most had no opportunity. We've rectified that to some degree. So just to kind of give you a little baseline, 2018, 19, and the years before, I can share the data, but it's pretty similar to what we're seeing here. It used to only be three classes that offered credit in a middle school. That was algebra, earth science, and studio as art. In those classes in that year, what I've done is I've showed you what the breakdown in our building is proportionally, just to get some frame of reference. In that school year, only three black or African-American students, which took the courses that would have had the credits, so roughly 2.5, clearly well below the proportionality of our building. So I don't, you have to just kind of remember those numbers, they won't come up again, but these will, we'll see again. This year, 2019, 20, that goes up to 385 students. Previously, you have seen 121 credit opportunities. We've more than tripled the credit opportunities for students in Miller Middle School. So in addition to algebra, earth science, and studio art, they now can earn credits through creative crafts, entrepreneurship, chorus, symphonic band, orchestra, and voice. We worked carefully and closely with lead teachers and departments at the high school to be sure that the rigor is there. Certainly, students might take this class and hopefully they all get the credit, but if they don't do the requisite work, they won't get the credit, they'll just take the class. How did the numbers work out? I did send over, I don't know if it got printed, a data sheet that we can prepare for you if you want to see the bigger numbers, but just to point out some high points here. Again, I gave you percentages. Yellow stands for anywhere that we've met or exceeded the proportionality of that subgroup in our building. So for instance, creative crafts for the black and African population, which as we saw, first of all, this year, we've already doubled the 3% we saw last previous year. But that's a flip, that goes up and down from year to year. I'd like to point out that accelerated Math VII is not a credit brand class, you know, it's on this chart, that's why it's highlighted out of there. But I want to point to these kids in the seventh grade, there are now 37 kids, five of which are black and are African, two of which are multi, seven of which are Hispanic, which greatly increased the proportionality of that same group in algebra, as well as some of the other. So overall, that 385, which brings us up to generally 14%, getting a lot closer, not there yet, certainly getting a lot closer to the 17%, 10%, closer to the 14, 19, getting closer to the 25. To make it a little easier to look at, I'm not going to send you this data, so you can see all the classes. But again, just those same numbers. We also took a look at the special education numbers, which are approximately 27% in our building, again, 21% this year getting potential for credit.
Next year, 11. 11 credits given to special education students this year potentially need to, I mean--
I think the numbers come out easy for themselves. So that's the availability of classes, okay? And so we're certainly doing some work to get more kids in those classes, more of a broader range of students in those classes. But we also have to make sure that the instruction they get in those classes is equally geared towards making sure that these needs are being met. And so again, in collaboration with Bailey, we're working with Dr. Alex Petersi from SUNY Albany, who is guiding us in some of the work that we're doing to reflect on our practices and to work on our delivery and make sure that we are taking into account our own development and our ability to work with diverse age students. Any questions? Yes.
Go ahead, Mrs. Shear.
Kudos. I mean, why didn't we do this before?
We're doing it now.
Really. I'm so glad that we're doing it now. It just makes so much sense, and thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Jordan?
I just want to congratulate you for finally moving into doing restorative justice. I'm so excited that there are people actually participating in the process to the degree that you are, and I'm hopeful that it will really take off. I'm also really happy that you've increased the opportunities for credit going into the high school, and I appreciate your remarks about still looking at the data and making sure that we have representation of all of our subgroups in accelerated math and algebra or science too, not just the other courses. So my hope is that those become over time reflective of the whole population, you know, so I, but I'm, I think it's a wonderful start, and I really appreciate the effort. And I also want to congratulate you for the self-care, because I think there has been a very big outcry by very wonderfully committed teachers that they're hurting too, because there's so much more on them now in terms of the social, emotional role. And so I think that we really do have to take care of them, and I appreciate the fact that that's highlighted in the report.
Thank you. I didn't make the slide, but we also, I just approved an after-school yoga for teachers as well. We're going along the same lines, depressing, kind of address their own needs.
How many period academic day do you have? Sorry? How many period academic day?
Nine periods.
So, so a student can take earth science and voice then, or in--
Yeah.
Correct. Thank you.
So, so I, you know--
We've fought for that for years, that's why--
That's why we asked for it and were granted the opportunity to tweak the schedule away from that 19 period, to provide opportunities like that.
Yeah, we, in fact, I have one student who's taking three high school credit courses right now, that one I didn't care that fit in her schedule, and it's amazing that the, it's like, everything changed.
And one of the problems is who's taking these classes. That's changing, I think, from my perspective, maybe it was most of them.
Dr. Joel Holowitz?
There's so much to talk about here. This was a great presentation, I really appreciate it, and I loved seeing how the sort of practices and the sort of justice and the trauma-informed education and the high school credits are really being put into action. So I have a few questions. You talked about the counseling sessions, mediation, circles, restorative conferences, and I'm wondering who facilitates all of those?
Sure. So it's a combination of support staff, administration, and so the circles are done by our facilitators. Although I'm trained, I have not been, I've been staying, I've been participating in other ways, I've been facilitating the circles, I've been really letting my staff be involved with that. But that is done by the people who have been trained by the Defenders Association.
I mean, one thing that we heard very early on in this effort was that this was going to take a lot of time and how are we going to fit it in? And I'm wondering how that feels to you, like how you're managing that and how everybody's managing it?
I would support the notion that it takes a lot of time, which is why, you know, again, we've trained a broad swath of people so that today, when a situation came up, we're able to reach out to the seventh grade teacher who was trained and say, we've got some seventh graders that need to handle that situation, can you do that in conjunction with the seventh grade guidance counselor? And then we can step back and do other things--
Yeah.
--and monitor that. But again, it also creates, you know, a strong relationship with the teachers and the students doing that work as well.
You know, it's the kind of thing that, again, it's not the, so I don't find it to be the answer for every single thing, you know, like you said, really, if one works, it's something special. It's the kind of thing that it takes so much work to get it, you invest so much time. It's really like you're investing in the long term. I have a situation where I had a group of boys that were having a conflict with each other. It was a pretty serious situation. One of the boys I had seen many times in, you know, since he's arrived at Miller, in my office, it was a really profound moment, something magical happened in that circle. I know that sounds corny, but really, they got to the heart of really what was going on, and kids started reflecting on how other, how each other were feeling. And the facilitators that ran it, I mean, they've just done outstanding job. That kid has not been in my, he hasn't had a single referral in two months, he hasn't had, he hasn't been in my office other than to check on me and see how I'm doing. I've used this example every time I talk about, about the circles, this group of boys. It was, again, it was, you know, without going into details here, it was a very serious situation that the boys took seriously and they walked into that circle, or walked out of it changed. So in that case, it worked. You know, and I want to paint a picture again, that this is going to be the answer to every single problem that we have, it's not. But it's a, it's a good start in terms of, you know, when it works, I really believe it's doing some long-term changes on the kids.
And then saves you, saves you much time--
Of course. It's an investment, right?
Right.
It's like, you know, losing $50 in your pocket, so within 20 years, it's $50,000, you know what I mean? It's hard to give it up in, you know, the currency of our time, but we're trying to make it work and we're trying to protect the time of the people involved.
And I completely agree with Ms. Jordan about the self-care. I think that's so important, and I think teachers need to see that they're valued in that same way. And I, I've heard great things actually about that program, and so I think that's really important. And then just one quick thing about the high school classes, you know, for a long time, we were told that there's only a certain number of credits you could take at the middle level, and so I'm glad that that's opened up.
We heard that as well, so we called the state. And come from them.
So, yes, well, I'm glad we did that.
Yeah, I was very specific with them, because that was, that was something that, you know, we get contacted, you know, I had to talk to Andy about it, and I contacted people at the high school, and no one really had any answer. They thought that I went on the website, I was wrong, couldn't find anything. So I contacted the state, and they got back to me and said, no, you know, that's not the issue, you know, it's really about, it's about your seat, your time, it's about the rigor, it's about following, and we're doing all of that.
And I think that's, that's great, that kids will then enter high school with a certain number of credits. And can you go back to that slide that shows the enrollment percentage was a little hard to see?
Yeah, I didn't have time to ask for it.
No, that's okay. I mean, I, this is, this is great, and as Ms. Jordan said, it's a really great start. I really think that we all of us need to really understand and pay attention to those two zeros and the really low, you know, like, what is it about voice and orchestra? What is it about symphonic band? Just, and to keep us thinking, and creative crafts, like just to keep us thinking about who we're attracting and who we're addressing, and what kinds of opportunities are available to what kinds of kids, to which kinds of kids, just that we are just constantly thinking about that, I think that's really important.
Right. You know, I look at those numbers and I wonder, you know, should we be putting more time and energy in recruiting or encouraging kids to join in the elementary school--
Right.
--to get getting involved sooner?
Right, and there are personal preferences, and that's great, like you want the diversity of that. So I'm not saying that that is necessarily a bad thing, but we should think about what that means and then reflect on what it means for our program, kind of, you know, in the trajectory of it, I guess.
Chats?
First of all, great presentation, it's exciting to see what's happening within the school. And I think that, as I look at it, you say, for example, it takes time to do these things, but I think that the more we go forward with it, the less time it takes as more people are getting involved, and it will have the impact. I'm just wondering, though, one of the things that got us to talking about this was the fact that we had so much suspension. How has that been impacted in this?
To be completely candid, our suspension rate is not a whole heck of a lot better than we would like. Certainly, it's down, last year, I reported, I gave you more specific numbers about suspension. To be completely honest, our first quarter, I'm going to face on back in the second quarter, because it ends this Friday, first quarter was slightly elevated from last year, I forget the exact numbers, but not as high as the previous year, so kind of getting a little bit of a step backwards for a variety of factors. Not really, breaking people's habits of violence can really challenge them, quite frankly. You know, that's one of the times where, you know, we are still using circles in those areas as well, but we're not getting the traction. We're seeing a lot more repeat offenses. So sometimes where the circles aren't working, it happened in those times when students will take responsibility for their actions in that moment, but it doesn't necessarily prohibit them from acting the same way when those stimuli happen again the next time. And so that's been really, it continues to be the challenge for us, is to break the cycle of violence and conflict resolution, not using violence to resolve those problems.
Let me also add that, the thing that we don't take, you know, when we look from year to year, we don't necessarily automatically take into account is how much trauma in our community has risen, and I got to tell you, we're, it's tough keeping up with it. And so although our suspension rates are going up, you know, even slightly, I can't help but think that the work that we're doing would be, you know, if we went to an approach that we had five, six years ago, maybe double, you know? So it, keeping up with, you know, the things that are going on in our community is just, it's a daunting task. I mean, a situation today where I had two girls that were in a physical competition, never been in a physical competition before, and we chose not to auto-suspend them, we chose to do a circle, because we had family, we had parents on board, the kids were on board, staff were on board, and so we conducted that. You know, we're going to, we'll be watching that carefully. We felt good about the work that we did to those students, and time will tell on those two, if we get the results that we want. We got them to stay in school, and they, they were, you know, they got instruction, and, you know, there were two less auto-suspendments for us. know, there were two less, you know, out of school suspensions for us.
I appreciate that. And again, what we see in schools is a reflection of what we see in our overall culture and it is getting more violent and, and many things. So I think it goes there. But I'm glad that we're, we're working on that to do it. The only other comment that I have is that when you look at those areas, for example, orchestra and voice, as Dr. Jacobowitz talked about, again, culturally responsive things might very well make a difference, you know, when, when what kids hear is a lot of European music and whole business and, and their culture is different than that, then they don't get too excited about, say, orchestra or music or something else. So that might be an area that we can look at that says, you know, yeah.
See, the numbers are great and I, I think, in fact, is those zeros and those low numbers all have new staff members this year if you look at those classes. And maybe we'll see a change move up on those as, as things change.
Right. We should, we should just be deliberate about that and conscious about it.
Did you have your hand up, Mr. Spicer?
I did, but.
No, you go first.
Well, I, I echo what the other board members have said as well. Outstanding presentation. And I was pleased and also really excited because inside of the teaching and learning committee on the board, we, we discussed increasing number of advanced classes, but we also discussed the diversity of those classes and how we can increase this opportunity to all of our students. And it's nice to, to hear that you've come and you presented, that you're actively initiating programs to increase diversity in, in those classes. It's very exciting.
I want to just come on, on that accelerated math seven class, you know, that was something that, that we've been talking about that really got it, got put in place by the teaching and learning department. So, you know, it's troublesome when you walk by and you look and you walk by an algebra or science in a middle school and you look in there and you don't see a diverse group of kids in there. So you ask yourself, how, how do you get a more, how you, the kids, to make it more diverse and make it so it's not disproportionate? How do you get those kids into that class without lowering the bar, right? But how do you give them the extra boost that they need to be able to have a shot getting in those classes? And the teaching and learning department put this accelerated math seven course together that's a very diverse, extremely diverse class. And the idea is that, that class, they will have a really, really fair shot in getting into algebra and the, and the math that they're doing also for earth science. So we're, we're, we're really banking that we're gonna get some output from that class.
It was a brilliant idea because it's sort of like a farm team. Those kids are gonna grow into your, into your credit bearing.
Correct. And we would like to see that expanded. You know, that's, that's, we're discussing that and talking about where else we can do things like that.
Well, well done.
Thank you.
Taking all the mandated classes, how many, how many credits can they actually fit in a schedule to get to the high school?
I mean, presuming that they're already, they're qualified for the algebra and art science, that'd be two credits right there, should they also be in studio part? Or it could be three to three and a half? And then if they were also perhaps taking instrumental in the symphonic or orchestra? So really, four credits, almost four credits.
And so we do have some eighth graders still, that, we, we do have a few eighth graders that are still in class classes, which is, if you're not familiar with class, is, you know, is a, kind of a gassed up study hall. It's a little amped up, there's a little more structure to it, but, boy, if we had some extra teachers, we could get those kids out of those class classes, we could get, we could work on even more credits.
I don't know if this is true because sometimes I might be dreaming, but I thought a couple of years ago we talked about attendance. Is that true? When we were, with Mrs. DeBello was here with you?
Yeah, I mean, so we, we.
So I was just wondering if any of those efforts that you made a while ago.
We continue to, so as you know, Ms. Miller retired last year.
Yes.
Her replacement this year is Stephanie Presser, who came over to us from CPS. Previously she worked for CPS. She now works for the district, so kind of changed teams, so to speak, but is acutely aware of how it all works. We are still, it's one of our goals in our, in our set plan this year to combat, to address and combat chronic absenteeism. It's, you know, we're making some progress, certainly, we are, Ms. Presser is, is very, very proactive. So she's doing a lot of house visits. She's continuing the work that everybody's doing with regard to the, the screening work that she's doing with children to find out why they're missing school. If they're missing school, she's been providing supports with other agencies that will help to combat whatever is going on in the child's life. We have a child that comes through our building every day and has to be cajoled out of their car to come into the building. Stephanie or Ms. Spiro or our nurses out there can, you know, make a clean, get the kid in your building. I don't have hard data for you, I apologize.
I just wondered if you saw correlation between all the efforts that you're making with your social, emotional and whether or not there would be an inverse relationship then between.
I'd like to say over time, but I can't say that we've seen that just yet.
Yeah.
As long as you've been making a plug for teachers. I would suggest that, given, given, you know, what we're recognizing, the work around the district we're doing with trauma, we might need some more caregivers, that being a social worker. Quite frankly, at the middle level, you know, our case loads of those people in both Miller and Bailey are considerably higher than the case loads of those in high school or whatever is available at the elementary level. So, so, you know, we're trying to address that, but it's, it's a daunting task. It is certainly part of the work we're doing. I think some words up is a twenty-five to thirty cases per, per practitioner. And so the meeting weekly with these kids or more, that's, that's a lot of time spent, you know, trying to tour these children. So I'm going to actually, if I had to, I would say, again, I would give up the teacher. He's looking forward to get the social order. But I think, again, getting back to the second, I mean, to get that foundational work, get these, get the field ready to receive the learning, we, we still really need to do that work and that really is, sure.
Thank you.
So I think it's a great presentation and a great change in direction and, and focus. And I really like seeing that the, the techniques that you, that came from the TACD in terms of analyzing disproportionality is being used in other areas than discipline. And that's one of our board goals, I think, for this year. So keep up the good work.
Just a couple, just a couple of comments and I, and obviously, Mr. Schieber and I have been together for a while because I was about to say, you know, you're asking for things, what are you gonna give up? Because that is my famous thing, before you ask what you're gonna give, you know, what you're gonna get, tell me what you're gonna give up. So, but I do, I wanted to say, just wondered where the Dr. Jacobowitz used, when we talked about some of the classes and that's deliberate. And when we look at the math seven, that's deliberate, but that's something that we're doing and sometimes it takes a change in how you think from some of us to do that, but that's deliberate to, to create that, that opportunity for that accelerated math. We also, not that this is a Miller thing, but just so people know, we also in our, in our summer academy, our eighth grade academy, we allow summer eight, summer nine. We do give health credit in there. So the students get other opportunities for health and opportunities of language credit. So we, we do try to pepper those things in where we can. So some of those students who don't traditionally walk into, walk into class, are walking to high school with class, with credits, get those credits. And although Mr. Schieber said their suspensions are up, in the first quarter, Miller had zero long-term suspensions. So, so, so maybe, you know, some of the short-term incidental suspensions may, may, and they're not up by much, they're only up a little bit. The, the long-term superintendent hearings out of Miller in the first quarter were zero. So that shows we're making efforts, even with some of the infractions that the past, we would say thirty days kind of thing. Now we're, now we're seeing that not happening. We're doing restorative things. We're, we're having conversations. We're going to, we're going to waivers and those kind of things to keep kids in school and not put students out. Because we know a one or two day suspension is one thing, but we know that, you know, frequent long-term suspensions for students is a recipe for dropouts, is a recipe for failures. And that's one of the things that, that we're addressing at the middle school level pretty, pretty successfully. First quarter, Miller had one, Miller had zero, Bailey had one. So, so we've, we've seen some real efforts in that area to, to keep those long-term suspensions to a minimum.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have our second century project with KSQ and BBL. Mr. Clapper is not here tonight. So, Mr. D'Leema and Carly, I always, I don't do well with Carly's last name.
Yeah, miss.
And Mr. Quardini are here tonight.
So we're gonna, again, I'll do a little quick intro. Carly's gonna talk about the capital project, the jobs, all the great recent highlights. Behind the scenes, we are still working on the, Carly's gonna talk about the name base to, I'm on top of the capital project, we're preparing for upcoming summer work, some middles coordination, a lot of investigative work. I think Miller and JFCA was one of those, a lot of the structural components. Again, it's trying to prepare to do everything in our hands, school has to be ready to start some work there. So with that, Carly's highlights on the project at the high school.
Hey, hey, everybody. We've got a lot to happen since we were last here in early December. The auditorium is now complete. Tom Clapper and Michael Rourke did the certificate of occupancy earlier this week and the space is ready for your presentation on the thirtieth. On the second floor, all bathroom tiles are complete. We're gonna be working our way down to the first floor in the beginning of February. They still have a little bit of floor work to do and some plumbing open before they put the tile up. We did begin putting up casework on the second floor in the classrooms, the teacher stations. I only have a few pictures, but they made a lot of progress this week so far. We did begin terrazzo replacements a little early. They began those today. They're up on the second floor. They're working on removing the areas where the cracks are along the hallway and we're replacing them from that what is already there. Next week, we're gonna begin floor leveling on the ground floor and the two corners of the ground floor and the nurses area and the game bathrooms. Then after that, we can begin finishing our framing in the bathrooms and start to put down some finishes in the nurses area. Painting is still ongoing, that's really a very big process, but we're finishing up on the second floor. I believe they finished earlier this week actually and the first floor is continuing. And then on Monday, we set some steel up on the roof of the music wing and the auditorium, that area, according to the handling unit, say those were set yesterday and everything left perfectly, so those are good. The auditorium looks great. The new musical panels are up on the back wall and as well as side walls. The district will be putting back up the stage lighting and that sort of theatrical equipment. That'll be gone back before the presentation on the thirtieth. The air conditioning is being completed. It'll be ready for the next cooling season, but the heat is working. On the second floor, the bathroom tiles matches what we did over at Salt and then the wings tie all the buildings together so that the end main will flow into what we already did with finishes. We began putting up some classroom speakers and like the black ones to the right are the projectors for the white ones and whatnot. And the white ones are like the overhead speakers if you page someone's after building, that sort of setup. Didn't see it that well, but this is a room on the second floor that's completed. It really brightens it up a lot. Doesn't look like it, but it does clean it up. We started putting in some casework, as I was saying, and in this specific room, they did do all of the wood restoration. And this piece right here will hold all the electrical conduits for the teacher stations, all the data, telephone wires, electrical, all of that. On the nurses area, we started framing and we put one side of sheet rock up. Now they're putting in the wall insulation inside, then they'll be closing up those walls. And we've also put up the curtain hall on the inside of the building. That will be the new interior entrance into the nurses area, separating it from the classroom phone hall. Continuing with sheet rock on the ground floor, made a lot of progress in the past month. A lot of areas are being closed up in the new art rooms. And this is a photo of the adaptive P E room. This will be the new archery range. On the first floor, the bathrooms are almost complete. They just have a little bit left to do before they put the tile up. The ceiling framing is up. They have their mounts for the new lights. Those are the circle things that you were seeing. They have all their units above the ceiling and they'll be closing up those areas shortly. This is our new rooftop equipment that we got yesterday. Those will help conserve the cooling system of the auditorium. And then on the ground floor, we're continuing putting up ductwork and this is the new bathroom at the end of the hallway. They'll be done with that shortly as well. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I was at the auditorium today. It's stunning. Really, I, I can't wait. And that night is the concert, the, the first concert on top of that, so I can't wait here.
Can you go back to slide three?
Is it?
Looks like, that, that's slide three yet. Looks like Carnegie Hall.
Well done. What are the black? What are the black?
Uh, the lighting? Those, that's where the lights were set.
Oh, they're not there yet?
They're not there yet.
Okay.
They'll be put up. Yeah, they rest there and they come out.
Are we using the old lights or do we have LED?
I think they're the old lights for the stage lighting, the new lighting within the auditorium itself, that's all.
So is all the stage lighting the old lighting? Does the air conditioning work?
Not yet. Carly, there's, I hate to be the skunk at the picnic, but there are, on both, if you go, well, you can't see it in any of the pictures, but if you're, if you're on the stage and you look to your right and your left, up on the, and there are two empty, like two holes in the wall that housed something at one point. I'm trying to figure out how we did a massive renovation. There's still a dirty, filthy stuffed animals in one of them, number one. Number two, and then why, what are those holes for and why didn't we do anything with them?
I'm not sure exactly what they were for, but my head, I guess I thought they were for some sort of, like plays or, I don't know if you use any of your equipment up there?
There are catwalks up there that lead to that. I don't know what was up there initially. Those animals have been there since the nineties.
I know, we just did a full renovation and I looked up there Thursday and they're still there.
Yeah, Vince asked me about them and I said, throw them away. They're full of mites, I'm sure, at this point.
I think they use it for light, I think they, they use some of that.
I've been.
Space for lighting onto the.
There are catwalks up there.
I've never seen anything come out of those holes.
Let me do some lower cuts. Our, our back.
And I, I did walk the building on Thursday last week, so thank you for making that available to me. I'm really happy that we're gonna cut out the terrazzo and replace it in chunks instead of what was done in the past, which was fill it, which looks really not good.
They're taking out a section on each side, so it's just a giant rectangle essentially, not just repairing that little crack, taking it out completely.
It'll look nice.
It will, and it will, color match is scheduled to match what is ours.
And it's difficult with terrazzo where it ages, but the, but to cut it out in slabs like that, it'll at least look, it'll look like a seam or whatever, instead of what we did in the past, which was pretty shoddy work.
And the whole thing does call to be cleaned and polished and everything, so it will look good.
Thank you. When we have the thirtieth and have those other schools here, are there bathrooms that they can?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're working on that.
Okay.
And so how are we in terms of our timeline and budget on this whole part of the?
So far, we're under budget and we're on time. The auditorium was scheduled to be turned over this Friday, actually. So we're, we can hit a schedule on that, but everything else is on schedule right now.
And we'll start with the other part and everyone else will move out in, at the end of June?
At the end of June, we'll take over the west half of Maine, so the Cobham Winston side and the music areas as well.
Okay. And then they'll be out for a year?
They'll be out for a year, I guess.
Our big milestone is once Cobham Winston gets out, Camp Leveaux will transform somewhere. We'll start the abatement and the demo of that. By the time fall comes around for the start of school year, the building should be down and the raising. It's a big one.
Question about the, the plaques in the main entryway, are they up or down?
They're up.
I believe they're still up.
And they'll be left up until after the thirtieth, I hope?
They're gonna be up till the spring, till we make the switch over, so they'll remain there.
Yeah, they're part of the other side, so not until.
I'm sorry, Tom answered then, I forgot to.
July, yeah.
Okay. I think there's gonna be a lot of oohs and ahs as people walk into that auditorium. It's gonna be amazing.
If they've ever seen it before.
Yeah, well, I'm sure there's a lot of people who have seen it before.
Okay, and last, on superintendent's part is superintendent.
This is the, in the early process, one of the things we decided to do this year was take a really good look at our new pre-K program here in Mahar. Really, our data and more data will be out at the end of the year, but I did want to give you a half-year snapshot of where we are and what we're doing at Mahar with our pre-K center. We have our full enrollment right now. We started out, you know, determined we wanted to have 72 students. We have 72 students, and we have some on waiting lists right now. Our demographics, again, do very specific about what we want to see happen here, so this is our demographic breakdown. This is interesting, though, we're looking at the language, and we have a dual-language program going on in our UPA, but we have students who've come to us and who have, you know, multiple, you know, languages, so they're not only learning English, learning Spanish and English in dual-language classes, but they're also, we have nine languages being spoken in that program, so that's pretty interesting and eclectic and really exciting. Just showing where most of our students came from from these schools, and I do want to point out, one of the things is that, as you said, we look, we really targeted students, we wanted all but, all the grades, all these schools are Title I schools, so, you know, the majority of our students have come from our Title I schools, so we're excited about that, again, really focused on that and able to, you know, pretty much hit that goal. Attendance. Now, you would think that attendance wouldn't be something we were really talking about, we're talking about four-year-olds, but traditionally, in a pre-K program, the attendance is significantly lower than it is in regular programs for several reasons that we don't have to really go into right now, but the attendance here is phenomenal. We have 20 students who have perfect attendance, 22 of them only have one absence, another 12 with two, and four or more, we have nine students who have four or more. That is not normal for a pre-K program. If you look at some of our partners or even some of our in-house programs we had in the past, tends to be, you know, a pretty, I don't wanna say it's an issue or a problem, but it does develop habits as far as attendance going, you know, long-term, but I think here, given transportation, given the food, given the wraparound care, we have, you know, reasons for people to really get here and be on time and to be, you know, perfect attendance, 20, that's pretty good, but we're excited to see that. Demographics, see, I had free reduced lunch that day. But in fairness, since we have free and reduced lunch, 38 students received free breakfast and lunch, now that's actually a wrong word there. 38 of our students are eligible for free and reduced breakfast, uh, breakfast and lunch, but all of our students received free, or free, not reduced, which is free lunch and breakfast, so although as far as the fill, filling out the forms, it means eligible 38, but all of them received both breakfast and lunch. Any, I asked. Transportation and our wraparound care, again, some things we think are the most important parts of our program, and 39 students were taking the process at this point, and we have 11 students right now who are participating in the YWCA wraparound care, and again, first half of the year, I think a lot of that's not feeling out, and I think those numbers are gonna increase as we move on, whether it be this year or as we go forward in the This gentleman didn't actually drive the loss.
He could use it, though.
Second semester, we're adding eight more slots here at the pre-K center, so we will have an enrollment of 80 students. We are not at the maximum number of students we can have with our ratios of adults to students in the classroom. We can go to 21. We've made the decision to go to 20 this year, not to 21, so we're gonna take eight of our students off the waiting list and go to 20 in those classes, and then over the summer, and looking at our, looking at the program, we'll make a decision when we're ready to go to 21 for next year. But right now, you know, Dr. Falcello and Ms. Conti felt that 20 was doable, and 21 might have been a little stretched, so we'll do that and see if we can go to the next.
Dr. Pedalino, when you say there's a waitlist, are those kids who are not in any program now?
Some are and some are not.
Okay.
Our dual-language programs, something we talked about, two of our classrooms are dual-language programs, and our dual-language program is a, it's a true dual-language program where they learn one thing in English on one day, and the next day, they learn the same thing in Spanish. So we have those classes perfectly, not perfectly, but we have those split up in our Spanish-speaking students and our English-speaking students, so each of them is getting something new on the alternate day. So this has been, you know, called kind of like the Ferrari model of dual-language, this is what we're delivering in two of our classes. Two of our other classes are traditional models, regular pre-K programs. We're working now, I'm working with teaching and learning right now to develop our plan to expand this as these students go into kindergarten, first and second grade, so we wanted to see how we're gonna be able to do that. And we're not, but we also don't wanna, I don't wanna say that the only student in the Kingston City School District to get dual-language will be students who came here. We wanna be able to offer that, you know, to students who maybe didn't come here. These students, um, will have a leg up because they will pass one year, but we wanna be able to offer it to more than just those two.
On the dual-language, how, what's the breakdown there of the, how do we decide which children are gonna get that? And, and again, what kind of breakdown do we see there as far as?
Yeah, it was by choice, you know, we let the parents choose. Some parents didn't want it. Some parents were like, I don't want my kid in the dual-language program. We let them in the traditional, the four, they don't need that, and other parents chose. We really, but we really worked to make sure it was almost an even number of Spanish-speaking students and, and English-speaking students.
Don't totally answer my question. How many African-Americans are in that?
Oh, you know, I don't have that, I don't know, different, different language-wise. I don't know, but I can, I can get that, and I'll share it up with the board as a whole. I don't have, I don't have breakdown per class by subgroup. Creative curriculum, that's, that's actually what it's called, the creative curriculum. So this is a curriculum that is required by New York State, and we're putting it into both, even in the Spanish and the English classrooms, we are using that. It's, I shouldn't say it's required, it's a state-approved program. It's theme-based, it's used in 90% of the pre-Ks, the pre-K classrooms in New York State, and like I said, it's taught in both English and Spanish, again, based on play, experiential learning, which is one of the things we talked about in person, it's just gonna be a play-based curriculum, and which is a play-based curriculum, where students put multiple skills going through this. Just an example of one of the lessons through that curriculum, tree study, some of the things that the students worked on, they obviously made physical representations of things in trees, and then they talk about what are characteristics of trees, who lives in trees, what food comes from trees, et cetera, so this is the kind of thing that goes through on that curriculum, and very hands-on, play-based, but also informational. The goal, progress monitoring and assessment, again, this is one of those things that is state-required. We have to, we have to monitor and assess our students. Now, we say monitor, assess, it's not like a sit-down test, you know, the three-through-eight DLAs, but we do monitor them, see how their progress is, and it's not just about, you know, their academic progress, their cognitive progress, their emotional, social-emotional skills, and those kind of things that are measured. The interesting thing about, the really good thing about this for us is it eliminates the need for pre-K screening over the K screening that we've had to do, the academic K screening, which is a, which is a pretty big endeavor for us to do, so students, this goal, progress monitoring, allows us to kind of skip that one part of that K recitation. All of our UPA providers, so not just here, but all of our providers in our community are also using this tool to ensure we have consistency throughout everything, our programs. So when our students come to us, you know, we've all been monitoring, assessing them the same way, whether they're here or at Little Red or Aunt Jen's or any of those places. That's the visitors. You can see over here, we have Mr. Spicer, who came and visited and rented our pre-K students, and over here, we have Ms. Bondell, who came and rented where the wild things are, students, and here's just some pictures of our students at play slash learning. Yeah, we're gonna have a lot more data for you when we talk in June, but we didn't want to give you kind of just a half-year update.
I think it's so exciting.
I think it's great. This is what we've been looking for, and the things look great. A question I have, though, have we had any children that we've suspended from this program?
No. They've not suspended any students from this program. We have had programs, we have had some students who come who can't handle a full day, not just here, but in other programs that we have around, so they try to phase them in back into a full day, but no, we haven't had any formal suspensions from our pre-K program.
It's nice to see that this doesn't look anything like the border region's Common Core curriculum for pre-K students that they published years ago when Common Core was the be-all and the end-all.
Yeah, I think the creative curriculum program that we've adopted is research-based, it's really kind of the, the curriculum is being used and widely accepted, that's the best curriculum to be using in a pre-K center.
I'm just so, I'm so proud of the program. I think it's so, it's such an incredible opportunity that we're offering our kids. I love the dual-language, and I think that even in the traditional classrooms, that's a play-based curriculum, and I'm just really, every time we talk about this, just really proud of this, that we made this happen, and really proud of the team for putting something like this together.
Mr. Spicer?
I was sitting in the audience while all this is being planned. I was not on the board at the time, and I was wondering how it was, it was all gonna work out, how it was all gonna come to fruition. It's incredible. It exceeds everything I thought that you guys were planning and everything that we were hoping for, and all the programs that happened, including a dual-learning program with pre-K is spectacular, it's so forward-thinking, it's just amazing. And as I traveled through all of the community organizations that we all, we all attend, different community organizations, they are very excited about everything that's done with pre-K and the dual-language program, and all the services we provide through the pre-K. It's just spectacularly forward-thinking, and I'm proud of us all.
Thanks to the people who have made it, we're proud.
Yes. I think we have to be very proud of Dr. Pedalino and the Teaching and Learning Committee and, or Department, and even the Business Department that's paying for it, for taking our, the germ of our idea and making it into what it is right now.
Do we, we still have pre-K students at GW, correct?
Yes.
Now, what does that program look like compared, like, I see two students, or two from GW on the list. Do we have openings there?
We don't have any openings at GW. We have a waiting list also there, you know, and it's more of a Montessori model there, we also include three-year-olds in, in GW, so we have threes and fours, and then at a children's house, that, so we, but we pull, we have 57 students over there, three- and four-year-olds in GW. They're, but they're right in the Montessori curriculum, doing the children's housework with the kindergartens, and so that's a, the Montessori.
If we had enough of a waiting list for next year, would we consider opening another class here?
Yes, we would consider it. I think one of the things where we have to work out is gonna be space, obviously, you know, I think six is gonna be our maximum, so we can use the two, yeah, the two up there, which are perfect rooms. Six will be our maximum. We have to work with, you know, it's a very different animal working with Children and Family Services than it is working with State Education Department, and technically here in this school, we are a pre-K center, we are not a school, because we don't have any other grades here, so we have to follow the OCFS rules, not, and not necessarily the State Education Department rules, so it's a very different animal, we're, so getting approval for rooms requires a certain process, so to move on to have another two rooms, we need to go through a little more process. But we did do most of the structural work we needed to do to have the GW, or the GW, the YW, wraparound care up there. So there's a few, there's a few kinks that we have to work out, but we hope to go to, and again, we don't wanna rush it. We wanna serve as many as we can, but we wanna do it well, that's, there's the reason of going to 20 instead of 21 per class, and then, I know, it seems like what's 21 to 20, but I think anyone who's had 24-year-olds in front of them for any period of time, or any 20 students at any age, would probably say that one can, can make the difference there, so we're, we're gonna slowly, so maybe next year, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about, two, two big, really important things to talk about is what are we gonna do with the dual-language curriculum moving forward, and what is our expansion gonna look like, a smart expansion of the pre-K center here in Mahar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to move on to Board of Education. First up is Facilities Committee, Mrs. Sheer.
Some of this is gonna be redundant, because they just did a slide presentation. I don't have any pictures, so we'll get through it faster. The 19th of December 18th, Facilities Committee were approved and are in this week's library, and will be posted on the website now. The KHS Second Century Project update, East Wing Mechanical, Electrical, Plumbing have all been wrapped in, and Sheet Rock Taping, Plastering, and Painting are now in progress, so you saw that in the slides. In the auditorium, the contractors were completing and now have completed the punch list in preparation for the county executive stated county address on January 30th. The East Wing is scheduled for an April turnover, and the West Wing work will commence in July after the close of school. MJM Window, an original window from the cupola of MJM, has been repaired and is being ready for display in the new academic wing. It'll be in the stairwell to the left of the new student entrance. The cyanotype completed by the Kingston High School Art Students and Teachers on the day of the groundbreaking in April of 2015 is now hung in the hallway above the student, main student entrance now, and it's lovely, you should take a look at it. It's 100 years of KHS, and it's, it's really beautiful.
It means you can see it at night, if you're really, it's dark, it's really.
Yeah, at night, when it's all lit up, you can see it much better, but up close and personal, it's nice, too. In terms of update on Miller and Edson's summer work, part of the current five-year capital improvement plan, window contractors are now submitting proposals. The auditorium seating for Miller was selected by the board one or two meetings ago, and custom variations were available for the Irwin seating that we chose, and their contract includes replacement of parts for life. The final cost came in substantially under budget. Principal Jamison from Kennedy inquired about the elevator work at Kennedy and has been told that work can commence on the inside of the building. Facilities Charter and Flow Chart were presented by the Charter Committee, and the committee had, in a meeting just prior to Facilities, recommended a few revisions, so the final version will be presented to the board at the second meeting in March. Dr. Pedalino announced that the Papark Sports Complex softball field behind Chambers will be receiving an upgrade. Mr. Clapper requested Bernier and Lario survey the fields and associated buildings, and a portable softball mound has been purchased. Committee voted to move meetings to alternate months as the pre-K project at Mahar is now complete. So the next meeting of Facilities Committee will be held March 11th at 3:30 here in the boardroom.
Thank you. Any questions?
When would they begin working on the elevator in JFK?
They can begin working on the inside now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the outside, there's.
Yeah, they'll be working on the outside.
They can work on the outside now.
As soon as, as soon as the weather permits, they'll start working outside.
Okay.
Yeah, so it'll be ready for September.
But will they wait for the inside work for the summer, right? Will they wait for the inside work till the summer?
When students aren't there.
Till the students aren't there, excuse me.
Are you ready by September?
Yeah. Are you gonna take a ride with me?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Policy Committee.
The Policy Committee met on Friday, January 10th here, and we reviewed the extremist protection orders, which is called the Red Flag Law, for the second time, I think, and we talked about including language in the existing code of conduct and safety policies that was recommended by Mr. Verge, and he's going to look at those and dovetail the necessary language in to be compliant, because he felt rather than have a standalone policy, it would make more sense to build that into what we already have. And we know that he has many skills to do that, he's done that press in the past.
And our legal advice was to do the, we ran that by our legal team, and they, they thought that was the best idea also. that was the best idea also.
Right. And there is a training mandate in the policy, but the specifics about that training and how it's gonna happen will be in regulations, not in the policy. In terms of our homeschool students, which we are doing our first reading of today, there is not currently a policy because it's not required. But it has, again, Mr. Verge recommended this because we have a number of inquiries regarding homeschool students, and that is important. And so we figured rather than wait, and it is something that affects us all the time, it makes more sense to have a policy. So one of the things that Mr. Verge stated was that the immunization law and regulation kind of highlighted this policy and brought attention to it, which we might not have really had before. So we did have a question about, did we, did we answer the question about the rights to participate in certain activities in the school, the chorus?
We did. We checked with our.
Attorney.
Attorney. And students do not have a right to participate in any school district activities.
Okay, so that, so the, the homeschool students. So we can go forward with that because that would not be changed. That's what we, we discussed that at the meeting because there was a little uncertainty about whether they, there were certain things that they could participate in and others that they couldn't. But there's a flat out, you don't participate if you're not enrolled as a Kingston City School student. So that was in the library for a first reading. And rather than go to, should I do them both at once? Or should I, should we?
No, we don't need to move them. It's just a first reading.
It's just a reading. Never mind then.
Next meeting.
So if you haven't read it yet, please do. And if you have any questions, please bring them to my attention. The other first reading we're doing is the federal funds purchasing policy. And Mr. Olson pointed out, he felt that there should be kudos given to Beth Woodard and the other staff in the Treasurer's Office and the Finance Office because they did a lot of work regarding this new requirement. There were many districts throughout the state that were not compliant, so that there was a manual developed. And is it called the desk review? Am I right about that? To assess the compliance with federal mandates. So this, this is about federal monies. And to minimize the risk factors, we have to have both procedural and policy changes. And it is specific, again, to the federal policy. So the result was a recommendation of this policy. It's been reviewed by council already. And the work was done by Kingston City Schools, and it was shared with the county. So everything that Beth Woodard did and everybody on staff there shared this with the county so that they could benefit from the work that they did, which I felt was very nice as well. So I would ask again that you read through that policy. And if you have questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Any questions? Kudos to the Business Office.
She's saying she does nothing, but she's always saying.
Without objection, I'd like to add a brief report on the District-Wide Safety Council meeting that we had yesterday. Mr. Lamb?
Yesterday was probably our most productive meeting of the year. First of all, Ulster Ho's Assistant Chief, Matt Molinaro, presented Stop the Bleed, which was brought up at the coffee and conversation by, who was it, Mr. Bloom and his son Jonathan, and has made plans with us to train the staff and students eventually also. We also talked about the signage for buildings, which we've talked about signage for buildings since September, and have gotten really not that far. It was for outside door numbers so that when someone has to respond to the building, they know where to go. Came to a decision yesterday that Mr. Parker will send out a request to the building's principals and give them two weeks to get back to him so that we can get those signs up before the end of June is the goal. And I, I think that'll move rather well. Meetings, they had moved to go to every other month for our Safety Committee meetings, which I thought was a little, and I was not in agreement with that. However, it was brought up that we, our Committee of Forty-three, yesterday was the most I've seen there. What were we, twenty maybe yesterday? Which, which is quite an increase. But it's hard to make a decision with forty-three people. So what we're looking at doing is setting up subcommittees that would meet the opposite month. They would report back to that committee. And Mr. Parker would make, you know, with the committee would make the final decision on what, how we would go on things, which, which I think is a wonderful idea. Because some people are, want to do the Stop the Bleed, some people want to do signs. But it'll, it'll take, it'll take some of that bureaucracy out of, out of our meetings. And I, I thought it was really a positive meeting. We also, he is also requesting each of the elementary school buildings to give him, or actually all the buildings, to give him a schedule of when their monthly meetings are so that he can go, you know, if, if he wants to see something. But he will be keeper of that schedule for all the monthly Safety Committee meetings. And that was basically it. But it was, and people were still there at quarter after five discussing stuff in, in the media center, which meeting was supposed to be over at four-thirty, so.
There's a lot of enthusiasm.
Yeah. Oh, and by the way, the Stop the Bleed, the ladies, like, already today, there was a question on, on being asked back. And they're, they're started. They're ready to get moving on the nurses on the training.
Thank you. Any questions?
Our monitors have been trained, our high school monitors have been trained in Stop the Bleed. So now it's just expanding that out to some other members of the staff and then eventually students. There was a lot of email about that today from Safety Committee members.
I wanted to ask Mr. Michaels, have there been any meetings of the New York, the, the City Parks and Recreation Commission?
Yeah, it's been a meeting the beginning of the month. There was nothing you to report, really. What the city does is they said they're gonna do first, they're gonna do the, all the work around the Andretta Pole. And they said by June, we, we have the consultants, all the meetings for the work at the stadium. So the first thing they want to work on is the grandstand. They wanted to work on that one, so.
I think the, the mayor announced that his swearing-in speech that they've gotten a, another two and a half million dollar grant to repave the, the parking lot, the parking area with environmentally friendly techniques. So that puts the total to five million dollars that they have grants for.
Yeah, and also the Freeman announced that the city created a reserve fund for the improvements for the stadium yesterday. And that was part of our agreement with the city to create a fund.
Right.
And we already have about $280,000 for the commission, operation money into the fund.
That's great. Okay. The consent agenda, next. Are there any resolutions that a board member would like to have pulled?
I have a B thirty-nine. I just have a question about it.
Okay. I'd like to pull B forty-two. Do you have a question on B thirty-nine?
Yeah, I would like to ask Mr. Olson. We have almost $8,000 collection. It's gonna impact our budget.
Beaten.
I'm sorry?
The eighty million dollars, you know, the taxes in arrears, right? So how much do you get normally by the end of this, for a year? How much do you get back from the county that makes our election? Normally, what is that number there by the end of the year?
With your permission, I'm gonna turn this question over to Mrs. Woodard. So it's the tax collector, but I, but the county, the county makes us hold, timing of that is what it upsets.
Do we get a this?
The county and the city both pay, well.
Pay us back, right.
The county will send money, whatever they collect that's delinquent, every month towards that. At the end of two years, they will make us hold on the whole amount.
By the end of two years?
After.
Okay.
There is a portion of this, though, I believe, that is resulted from certain properties in the town of Ulster, which there's a legal issue with still.
Okay, that's part of it.
Okay.
Well, how pretty much that big?
Well, I could make my comments about B forty-two if you allow me to and not pull it. But it's, it's just a com, this is the non-resident tuition rates. And I always like to point out every year that these rates are calculated by the state based on our budget. And they are preliminary rates that out of, out of district students would, would pay for attending Kingston City School District. And there's really a big, they do it for regular education students and tuition for special education pupils. And for regular education students, the tuition is, is different for pre-K six and seven twelve, but it averages about eighty-six-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And for special education, it averages about forty thousand, two-hundred dollars. So there's really just a huge, huge difference in the cost that we incur for special education students. And not that I'm complaining about it, but I, but just want the public to know that there is that, that that's how expensive it is. And we do get state aid for it, but I don't know if it covers everything. So, so we don't need to pull it. So.
And it makes our investment in pre-K all the, all the lines up.
And that was one of the, that was one of the reasons that we adopted that, that goal.
Why did the rates go down? It's, we, we charged less this year. And our budget went up. But we can charge less this year than last year. Why is that?
Well, the calculation is arcane at least. So, you know, and it's about, I don't know, four, five, or six pages long. And it's, so I couldn't tell you exactly how they reached that. It kind of tends, it goes up and down year to year. And the budget, as you know, normally goes up a little bit, so.
And actually, the.
It's not following the budget specifically.
The, the rates that we are approving tonight are based on the budget. And below that, and then it's adjusted based on actual the following year. And so the two thousand eighteen, nineteen, actual tuition rates are higher. I presume, I didn't check, but I presume that they are higher than what was budgeted last year, what we adopted last year. Any other questions?
So you're not pulling, what did you, you're not pulling?
No, I mean, I just wanted to point that out. So I ignored the consent agenda regulation.
Should we vote on the consent?
Yes, we have to vote on it. We need a motion to vote on the consent agenda.
Those move.
Second.
Okay. Being that discussion has already taken place, just call, call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, you now have to be adopted. Next on the agenda is.
Can I just add one, something really quick, I'm sorry. P sixty-five is our new Assistant Principal at Kingston High School, Christina Bartley. And she is not here tonight because she is in San Diego, working on the High Tech High Initiative that we have going for Kingston High School. So we'll invite her to come back when she gets back in town from the West Coast.
Okay.
And we can congratulate and welcome her then.
Thank you.
Although she's been with us for a few months now.
And maybe we can learn something about High Tech High in San Diego. Okay.
Donations?
Old business?
Donations.
Of donations, yes.
The Kingston City Schools greatly accepts a gift of $500 from Mr. Kevin T. McCuey to the Crosby Elementary School. We also accept a gift from Gateway Industries of our inner-office mail folders made to the district.
Okay, thank you. Old business? We have nothing listed on the agenda for old business?
Well, we kind of have the resolution about the board election districts. And I just think we should just highlight that we are going back to seven districts from three, just so that the community.
And we have machines.
Yes.
Because we have.
We will, we will start a publicity campaign on that pretty soon to make sure everyone knows. We have our machines now. And we're gonna go back to our, our old sites and move forward the way we used to, instead of the way we did that.
I don't think we'll get any objections from anybody about that. I hope not.
No, I just wanted all the people at home watching to know that.
Okay. Thank you. New business?
New business.
Oh, what? Oh, I'm sorry.
Kind of old business that's kind of ongoing business, that the, we got our, the state runs came out today. So I was just wondering if there's any commentary on that or what that looks like.
We are, as I say every year on this day, I think, over the last eight years, we are analyzing what came through. Because very often, what's in the governor's runs aren't necessarily the reality of some of our, especially our expense-based, based aids. And this year, they threw an extra curveball in where they just threw them all into the foundation aid and didn't, didn't hold them out.
Right. So what does that mean, especially with building aid and all that kind of stuff?
Well, building aid's in. Building aid's out separately. So we, we pretty much know that. And the building aid is never right anyway. We have to go back and recalculate the building aid. Because they tend to give us aid on every project that we have in the hopper. But we only give aid on projects that have a, are a substantial completion, or we apply for early state, early aid, which we haven't for some of this. So, which we may still. But, so a lot of those numbers aren't right. I would say it doesn't, right now, it's, it's a decent result, I think, the governor's budget and what he's put in for Kingston City School District. I mean, I'm not saying it's great, but I'm saying it's, it's decent. So we're gonna continue to pull that apart. And I'll have more next time we meet. You know, and I like to let Beth Woodard tear that apart and tell me where the governor was wrong and those kind of things. And then she deflates my optimism. Because I think we got something great. And she says, it's not true. It's not really there. So, but, so I'll have, but I think overall, I mean, compared to how we've, we've fared in previous governor's budgets, it's better.
Well, and given all the rhetoric about the deficit and.
He did, he did keep to his word. I'll, I'll say that, you know, that with funding, you know, putting the money towards education, putting money towards the schools that need it. If you looked at the runs, the city schools did seem to make out a lot better than some of our suburban counterparts across the state, not just in that county.
Could you send us a link, email us a link to the state aid runs?
Absolutely.
So that we all don't have to go searching for it?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Any other old business? Okay, we'll move on to new business. The first subject is the Undoing Racism Workshop. I'm not familiar with it. So who's going to?
Yeah, what's happened is that the Kingston Interfaith Council, which is made up of various religious groups in our community, wanted to bring this to the Kingston area, because it usually is run in Poughkeepsie and other places. And we wanted to bring it here to Kingston. So this is the second year that it's happening. And I've attended a couple of these. And it's very in-your-face type of presentation. But I think it really moves the bar in, in the area of trying to resolve some of the issues that we face as far as racism is concerned. We, as a Kingston Interfaith Council, we pay for some of our police officers to attend. because we want everyone to be on that page of saying we want to make our community a better place. And so this is, is being done by, again, as a result of the Kingston Interfaith Council. The hope is that the school district would participate also. I'll say this, that a few years ago, when this was offered, what changes have taken place in this school district is tremendous. We had, a few years ago, people from the, from the school went to the session, stayed a couple hours and left, and didn't come back. And the things that were having, that are happening within our district now, all over the place, is just tremendous. And so we've made great, great strides, great improvement, and this is something else that can add to what we're doing.
So, sorry, we're calling out, this is at the St. John's Church on Albany Avenue?
Yes, the Episcopal Church.
And it's a two-day-
Well, two and a half days.
Two and a half day conference. And I guess if, is-
If we get a, we got a-
There's a flyer.
Fire.
Yeah, okay.
It's in the Board Library.
Right. And when is it again?
March the-
There's three, three days.
Three days.
First weekend in March.
Yes, fifth, sixth, and seventh.
Okay. So if any board member would like to attend, please let us know. And we can, I think we have money in our Board Education Conference budget that we could cover the expense.
I think there's enough.
Because I think it's, the fee is three hundred, seventy-five dollars or some- Three fifty.
Seventy, if you go that night.
Your husband Charles, are you not, you're going to be there?
No, I've attended a couple of those.
Yeah, you have, okay.
So we can, we can, we can report back on that for the next meeting and approve any attendance. Okay? Strategic planning. So we had our board retreat on last week and discussed board relationships with the, between the board and the superintendent. And also got information about building a strategic plan for the district. And I'm not sure how we will do that. If it should be a, a board committee that does that, or a district committee, or a subcommittee of the board, a subcommittee of the board to do an initial, initial development of it and bring back to the board. But I, but I think we, we would, I think we'd take a motion, a resolution to, to proceed with that, with that concept.
Would it make sense for us, since we're going to be doing that training very soon with New York State School Boards, to wait until we get that information? Because it may dovetail.
Yeah.
And so I would prefer that we just wait for that training.
And you push it to the second meeting in February and have a resolution then?
Right.
Right, and then we can do next steps from there.
Right, okay.
And I would like to open the conversation in that training about our moving forward strategic planning because school boards may have, you know, I think we may want to do strategic planning differently than, I think our discussion was really around the board creating a strategic plan for the district at the board level. And that may be different than, I've read that there are boards that do it that way. There's different processes for that, and there's the big, giant, everyone in the district is involved kind of thing, but I didn't think we were really talking about that. And I think it could be this, would people do this? And maybe we can have, they can talk us through how we would manage the version that we want to do.
I, I would prefer, I don't know if consensus is, but it just seems-
I think it's a good idea.
Need a motion?
Well, not now. But I just wanted to bring it up. And we'll go forward with it. And one thing I did bring tonight is just comments of a page from the Mid Hudson or Pattern for Progress Out of Alignment Study. And a page, implications for classroom size and cost of educating students. And these are projections for the two thousand and twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-nine school year. And for Alster County, they project a thirteen point six percent decline in enrollment and an increase of, so that would be from twenty-two thousand, four hundred and six to nineteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-four. Hopefully, we're not in that decline, but, but also an increase in cost per pupil from, what is the number? From thirty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year to forty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars in two thousand and twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-nine. And that's a forty-one percent increase in per student cost over the next eight years. So that's something that we really need to plan ahead for. What are those implications? Is there, and I, I was thinking perhaps we could have a, sometime during the next year, I mean, sometime in two thousand and twenty, we could have a presentation by Jonathan Drapers. He's the-
Drapkin.
Drapkin or someone from Pattern for Progress, so that we can ask questions about this.
I could talk to him about that.
Okay. And then, school foundation. I believe I've emailed all of you about, well, we've discussed it even. And this has been something that has been talked about off and on for a number of years. And we have a memorandum from Shaw Purson from two thousand and eleven about what is involved in establishing a, a education foundation for a school district. And this came to me in attending the swearing-in ceremonies for, for the mayor, for Mayor Noble and for Executive Ryan and Andrea Schott as, as city council president. They are all graduates of the Kingston High School class of two thousand. And they will be having a two thousand, a twenty-year reunion this summer. And I asked each of them if they would be willing to participate in the establishment of a, of a education foundation for Kingston City School District, and they all agreed to it. So I would like authorization to go forward with that, contacting them and perhaps contacting some other people. A few years ago, we had a, we had some effort to establish a, a foundation that was strictly limited to sports.
Correct.
But I think that we would want to establish a foundation that benefited all of the, all of the activities in the school district. And one of the, one of the things about a commu-, an education foundation is that it has to be independent of the school district. So board members and the superintendent are not eligible to sit on the board of a education foundation. So I think the way to proceed would be to formally request, formally ask by letter the mayor and the executive and city council president, and also solicit participation from some other community members who might be willing to organize and establish that.
Jim, I'm not familiar really with the foundation, but I'm just wondering, does this have an impact then on the people who every year support scholarships? You know, because we have thousands and thousands of dollars that are given by the community. And would that be the same money you're going after?
I don't think so.
It's a different kind of thing?
I think it would be a different amount of money.
Probably would be different. And I think there's some, I, I don't know so much around our area, but I know in the Capitol District, several school districts have, Albany City Schools has an education foundation. I think North Colony has an education foundation, April Park has an education foundation, where they hold different fundraisers and do different things to, to, you know, get money together and be able to support different things within the schools. I think, you know, we have, we also have, there's a lot of competition. You know, we have the President's Challenge Foundation, where those people give that money for the students who then get the free college education after they go through the eighth through twelfth grade, that project. So I think there was, there was competition, and I think years ago, we talked about this, I spoke about this a few, before even this, and, you know, it's possible we could even run it through the community foundation, you know, as them as the manager kind of thing.
Right, right.
Which, which helps us here in the Hudson Valley to have an organization like that, to help us kind of guide that.
Yeah.
But yeah, I think there's, but I think we have an interesting situation right there where with three people in that, in that graduating class who are now where they are. I was talking to Ben Whelan over at the, why, he graduated in-
Boys and Girls.
Boys and Girls, I'm sorry, in two thousand as well, so.
Oh, really?
So there's a whole bunch of people from the best two thousand who've come back and they're doing really good work in our community.
So the foundation then isn't necessarily scholarships, it's just support to the school.
Right, and their board will decide how they do it.
Field trips.
So it is kind of like the community foundation?
It's exactly like that, yeah, it's a foundation. And, you know, people could petition, we could petition, whatever, them making decisions.
I see.
And there's a lot of, there, I think there are five documents that Margot May sent to us in two thousand and eleven. And she did say that there's not, no change since then in any of that information.
Would it be worth looking at what the community foundation does and see if it kind of, where you're looking for a separate instance?
They manage a lot of foundations that already exist.
Yeah.
So they'll, they can manage that.
So this could be a self-directed fund underneath the community foundation.
Right.
And I think that might eliminate the necessity for establishing a separate 501(c)(3) corporation. But that's something we'd have to look into.
I, I think if a few years-
Pardon?
And I'll, I'll make a motion that we pursue the establishment of an education foundation with the graduates you named from class of twenty, two thousand, not twenty twenty.
Second? Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Announced, adopted. Okay.
I do have a couple of the new businesses, everyone is, I'm sorry. Just, this isn't really new business, but I already sent this email out, but I do, I think it's worth saying publicly. The comptroller's report came out on fiscal stress this week in Kingston City Schools District. Like, second year in a row, we have zero fiscal stress and zero environmental stress. Now, environmental stress doesn't mean pollution. It means conditions in our community that could possibly bring on financial fiscal stress. And they're saying those have been reduced. So last year, they were saying that they, we were at medium risk, now they're saying we're at zero risk. So we've been at zero, I think, as far as, as far as fiscal. Well, a lot of it is about tax, it's a lot about tax base and those kinds of things, a different calculation. But we have seen some significant growth in certain areas here that, that would, you know-
Which means we're in better shape than our neighbors.
But they, but our, we've been at zero on, we've been at no fiscal stress for, I think, five years.
More than five years.
Yeah, I think five years in a row now. So that's a pretty substantial thing and important thing to talk about. And I think that goes down, good fiscal management and by this board, good fiscal oversight, and of course, good fiscal, fiscal oversight here, fiscal management by our business department. And also, there were some questions going around about the board, some, some information that came out about the new law with the BOSI's capital projects. So I, I think that that's, that's a reasonable thing for us to talk about, for you to want to know. And I'm just going to turn it over to Mr. Olson, and he's going to give, kind of give you the Reader's Digest version of how, what it is and how it will be packed off.
Yeah, the condensed Reader's Digest version. So in our tax cap calculation, those of you who, you know, are familiar with it, and I think you all are to some degree, there are certain categories of, within the calculation where, for instance, pilots, you add in pilots, and then you, the new pilots, you take out old pilots, and it tends to not affect the calculation annually. And then there are certain things that end up being exclusions, which, if those pilots are different from year to year, then, then it can create a, an increase in the allowed levy or a decrease in the allowed levy. So the BOSI's capital costs are a bit like that, in that BOSI's capital costs don't tend to change much year to year. So they won't really affect the calculation because you'll look at the prior year's BOSI's capital costs and the next year's capital costs, and they'll offset each other. But if the BOSI's decides to do a capital project, build something, renovate something at high cost, then what it, what they, what the calculation will allow us to do is to kind of capture from, unfortunately, from taxpayers, so it'll allow us to, to have a higher tax levy limit and thus recover those costs which will be hitting us on our BOSI's bill. So when BOSI's does a capital project, they bill all the component districts. And so it shows up on our, on our bill. So if they build a building, you know, it's amortized over a particular period of time, but our capital portion of our bill will be higher. And if it's higher, if it goes up because they're engaging in a project, the district, and all the districts within the county will be able to recover those costs from, through taxpayers. So that's really what it's, in essence, what it's all about. It, it enables us to, since BOSI's doesn't have taxpayers, they just have us. We're the only ones who can recover those costs, and the state has decided that it's going to allow us to do that through the tax cap calculation.
So the other piece of this is, in the past, if BOSI's wanted to have a capital project, they needed a vote approval from the BOSI's Board of Education, approval from our Board of Education, and then a referendum and approval from our voters. They no longer need that. So that, so now that, that can happen with just the BOSI's Board of Education and the local Board of Educations. So now there won't be that referendum. I think there's a dollar figure though, right?
Well, I think the limit is, is if, if the-
Renovations.
Yes, if, if the capital costs are for renovation of an existing building, then it's exempt from a voter referendum. It requires only the unanimous consent of each of the component district boards.
It needs to be all of them?
But to build a new building-
To build a new building or to acquire a new building would require a referendum, a voter referendum throughout the county.
And now, while the, while the ability to increase our tax levy limit to offset that would seem to make sense and be reasonable, but we also have to remember there was, there was also the voters, our, our community's tolerance for what our tax levy is. So as, as much as we are great partners with our BOSI's, it's very important that we as a board, that you as a board and us as an administration look very closely at any BOSI's construction projects and capital projects that will impact us in that way. Just because we can, we can go up to two and a half, two, three and a half percent on our tax levy, our voters don't have a tolerance for that, and we don't, we haven't shown ourselves to have a tolerance for that as a board. So we need to just be, make sure we are what we've, what you've always been, which is, you know, good stewards of, of the taxpayers' money and pay attention to that tax levy limit.
Just because I have to really ask so many questions to understand. My understanding is that the future tax limit is somewhat based on what our tax limit would be. So let's say BOSI's does build something, and we get an ability to raise our limit, but we know that our constituents will not pay that much. Will then the next year be based on what we could have spent with BOSI's? No, okay. So that wouldn't skew it.
No, every time we don't go to the maximum tax levy limit, we sacrifice that-
Whatever that does.
But again, it's, it's, it's that, it's a very difficult choice. You sacrifice that, but you also have the potential of, you know, putting a-
Like, if we took a hit locally to support the BOSI's effort, we could still keep it in a certain range, but I'm just wondering, would that then hurt us the next year?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, the other thing is the fact that we are the biggest proponent of BOSI's, basically, so. We're the biggest districts, we're the most students. That's what is going to affect us the most, so.
Because the cost of a capital project is divided by the, by the percentage usage of the, of the districts in that BOSI's. We have- We have, obviously...
The worst, but on a pro-rata basis, the impact of a project would probably be the same on, on everyone.
Right.
They're proportionally...
Proportionately.
...of similar finances.
It's based on the, the student enrollment by district percentage, so we have about thirty percent of the enrollment in the BOSI's component districts.
Well, the projections you were talking about, though, during the next eight years are going to impact all the component districts, so it's not likely they're going to need a new building.
Well, they need renovations at the CTE building.
But that doesn't require a vote.
Right.
Right. It does require you to vote.
Yes.
Yeah, and it requires a levy...
So how big is going to be?
A levy on our taxpayers.
Right.
But I can say that the Alster, that the administration at BOSI's and the BOSI's School Board is very aware of that impact on the component districts.
So how big is going to be this project, all this?
Um...
Nothing different to it?
Well, they have, we've been discussing, BOSI's has been discussing a plan for renovating the CTE building, and I think the cost is now about twenty million dollars. The plan had been to build it, to, to finance it with existing money in their budget of about five hundred thousand dollars a year, and that would take years and years and years to accomplish, and probably get more expensive as each year went by. So I think that they will, that Dr. Corey will be making presentations to each component district sometime this spring about it. Talking about the BOSI's School Board, another, so we have a, Chris Farrell's term, a three-year term on the BOSI's Board expires this year, and he sent me an email today asking if, saying he would appreciate, and what, what he would have to do, beg or whatever, to be nominated for another three-year term. I told him I would bring that up today, and we also got today from Roxanne Babcock, the Board Clerk of BOSI's, an announcement of that. So we don't have to do it today, but maybe next, next, next board meeting, we can have a resolution to do that if, if he would be the nominee of the board. But I told him I would mention it tonight, so I'll just tell him we men, I mentioned it, but we didn't make a decision.
Well, I made my decision already. I'm in favor of nominating him.
You want to make a motion? I guess we could make a motion today and do it.
Yeah, I make a motion to nominate Mr. Farrell on the BOSI's Board for the next three years.
Second?
Second.
He's board president this year. He's, he's an excellent board member. We have experience, many years' experience with him on the Kingston Board, and I think this, he's finished, he was, he's finishing six years on the BOSI's Board now. So I'm certainly in favor of it.
He's, he's over exactly ten years on our school board.
Yeah. Yeah, so he's very knowledgeable and very dedicated to it. Any other comments or questions? So call the question. All in favor of nominating Mr. Farrell? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? unanimous? So that's taken care of. Board member announcements? Or any other new business? Board member announcements?
Very quickly, I went up to Albany last weekend to see our robotics team compete, and I got to tell you, you would be so proud. First of all, their auton, autonomous section of it functioned perfectly, and no one else's did. So it brought on the first place, they were in third place in qualifiers, brought the first-place team, which was Niskiuna, to choose them, and they will move on, as I told you, to the states. And nice job with the, on the website today, but I'm so proud of those kids. It was just a rewarding day. The trip home was a little hairy on Saturday, but the, the rest of it was wonderful. So, and the fourteenth of March is when they go to states. It will be at SUNY Polytech in Utica, and they have to be there at seven o'clock in the morning or earlier, but it's a two-hour ride. You don't have to be there until like ten to see what's important. And I'll tell you, if you get the opportunity, I would highly recommend it. I cannot because it's all county for my daughter, so.
Mrs. Jordan and I were at Bailey on Thursday evening for their showing of resilience, and there were actually about fifteen people there, so.
They had prepared so much food for everybody. I felt so badly. There was so much staff there, hoping that there would be a lot of participation from the public, and they, they gave away food at the end. But I suggested that they contact Spectrum and see if they would fund it to show it publicly a few times in our community, because everybody pays Spectrum a lot of money.
What is being shown, that's what, the Resource Center on Broadway?
Mm-hmm.
They've shown it at least three times. We showed it at our church once.
Did you have a good turnout?
We had fifty-some people.
Wonderful. Wonderful.
It's going to be at Robert Graves, too, isn't it?
Yes.
Robert Graves on the circuit.
Yeah, it is.
Or thirty, thirty-first, I think.
Thirty-first, yeah.
Friday, the thirty-first.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
And the city did, did publicize our showings as well on their website, so we kind of teamed up on our information.
It's certainly worth seeing.
Yeah, I think it's really worthwhile for everyone to see it, and maybe even some way it could be incorporated into our mental health curriculum for high school students, if that would work out, because it really is eye-opening. Any other part? Go ahead.
It's not just for the students, though.
No, no, I, no, I think it's...
Many adults have had things in their lives, and it, it carries over in adults.
Right, yeah.
And every faculty member and, every staff and faculty member in Kingston City School District has seen it at least once. And that, and our secondary staff has seen that, and they've seen Paper Tigers, so.
Yeah, I watched Paper Tigers on Saturday, and it wasn't as, not quite the same, but it's, yeah, not quite the same, but it was still worthwhile watching and to see. And that was in 2013, so, a school on the West Coast. So I think it's, the, the whole concept, the whole, has been migrating eastward since it was first discovered, I guess. It really was a discovery back in the early 1990s in San Diego, first, the first large study, so. Public participation? Are there, are there announcements? Any other board members? Public participation? Mrs. Bowers is not here.
She's, she lost. She's in Florida.
I'll tell you, mister. She's watching.
Hi, Maureen.
In three-degree weather in Florida.
You should give her the phone number. She can phone in.
Johnny Aguante.
Is there a need for a second executive session?
Yes. Yes, yes.
Okay. You want to make that motion?
Yes.
A second?
Second.
This is for the purpose of employment history of a particular individual. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so we will be adjourning to executive session, and there's no anticipation of a resolution coming out of executive session. So we can have a five-minute recess and then reconvene. Oh, if anyone would like...